Mr. Snyder, are you present?
I am, yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Confirmed, yes. And Mayor Hardy?
Here.
Thank you, counsel.
And Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Gould?
Here.
Ms. Henderson?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Sherwood?
Here.
Ms. Silverman?
Here.
And Ms. Teis?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one electronic motion to read today.
Mr. Snyder, could you please identify your remote location and reason for your participation by electronic means?
Yes, thank you very much, at Paris, France, for the meeting of the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development. Thank you, for personal reasons.
I move that City Council approve electronic participation by Dave Snyder in this meeting for personal reasons pursuant to the City Council's adopted policy.
You have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Siskop?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes, counsel.
Welcome, Dave.
Thank you.
Great. I think our school board friends have to also move on to something as well?
Yes, we do have two items that we'd like to formally approve. We've got a meeting after this, and we also have a quick action, so we appreciate the time to squeeze this in. First, we'd like to go ahead and have a motion for adoption of agenda. Ms. Teis?
I know that this school board adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks, Kathleen. Have a second. Lori, you? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. And then we'd also, 2.01, we need approval of superintendent search firm, which we have selected. So we're going to go ahead and approve that with a contract from the board. So can I please have a motion for approval of superintendent search firm? Lori?
I move that the school board name HYA Corporation as the superintendent search firm, thereby authorizing the school board chair to sign the superintendent search firm contract.
Thank you, Lori. Have a second. Thank you, Kathleen. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Lori?
Great. So again, thank you, the clerks, for the delicious meal, for putting that together, and thank you for our friends for joining us. And actually, following on Thanksgiving, thanks to all the first responders who worked over the holiday weekend, including our new chief of police, who actually didn't get to spend Thanksgiving, so we appreciate that they were working behalf of the city during Thanksgiving. So I hope everyone had a good holiday. I think this is now my eighth or ninth joint dinner that we've had, and these are always really great productive ways to kind of kick off the budget season, so we appreciate people coming together. I think tonight we have the usual things on the agenda, which is the revenue forecast, which is the longer weighted thing, enrollment projections, cost drivers, and then I think top of mind for everybody is that macroeconomic environment, and so we also have our guest, Teri, in the audience, who will be speaking as well. So we look forward to a good conversation all around. I'm not sure who I hand this off to before we get into business. Actually, we have one disclosure statement we need to read before we get into the budget discussion. Mary Beth?
The City Council is discussing budget guidance for the city of Falls Church. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, which may be affected by the proposed fiscal policies. As a result, I am in a group of three or more people who may realize a reasonably foreseeable direct or indirect benefit from the proposed ordinance. After consideration, I am electing to participate in this transaction because I am confident in my ability to participate fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, Dr. Waters, I called you Teri Zaiman instead. I'm going to hand this over to Wyatt and Peter to kind of take it on from here.
Well, good evening, everybody. Maybe I'll just say a quick word about our discussions before this meeting about how we thought we would approach tonight's content. So Chair Gould, members of the school board, Mayor Hardy, members of the City Council, I'm Wyatt Shields, I'm the city manager. It's good to be with you all tonight. We'll hear from the school administration first. We'll start with the enrollment productions. I'll let Dr. Noonan introduce our guest from the Fuller Institute, who will provide a presentation on enrollment and other matters. After the school's presentation on general government, I will provide a very short update on the West Falls project, and specifically on the financials, and how those dollars are being used today to fund the debt service for the high school. Then I'll turn it over to our chief financial officer, Kiran Bawa. She has about 12 slides that is a revenue forecast for the coming year, and a very short summary of some of the general government cost drivers. And so that is the order that we discussed. Dr. Noonan, any other introductory comments?
Well, just first of all, thank you so much for the setup this evening, and Mayor Hardy and City Council, Chair Gould, and school board, thank you very much for the opportunity for us to get together. I was thinking back to the times that we have been together. This is, I think, my eighth one, and I remember being in the small Dogwood Room downstairs of the old city hall. And I think it was the Dogwood Room, or whatever it was called, but it was tiny, and I just remember the group being really small. And so we've grown in size, but it's consistent with our little city, so that's kind of exciting. But thank you all for the opportunity to share. I'll go ahead and get started, if that's all right with you, Mr. Shields? Okay, great. Well, again, just thank you. And a couple of folks I want to thank as we begin the conversation tonight. To my left is Kristen Michael. Kristen is our chief operating officer in the city of Falls Church, and Kristen is tonight serving as my left-hand person, as opposed to my right-hand person. But Kristen traditionally has been very intimately involved in the budget process, and has been really thoughtful and helpful, working through a lot of the challenges that we tend to find ourselves in as we continue to build our budgets year over year. And Kristen's sort of left-hand person is Michelle Koppick, and Michelle is with us this evening, a couple rows back in the blue sweater, and Michelle has done an extraordinary amount of work as well. I also would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to thank my partner in crime here, Wyatt Shields, city manager. Wyatt has been, as usual, a really great partner to work with as the city manager and as the superintendent. And then his partner, Kiran Bawa. Kiran is back there as well. Kiran, thank you so much for all of your support as well. And then to our leadership team that is with us this evening. We really, really appreciate the opportunity to come and have a chance to have a dialogue about the schools, about our needs as we go forward. But before we get into any of that, I thought I would just start by asking if anybody saw the Washingtonian magazine from December 2024, this month's page 148. If you haven't seen the Washingtonian, the December edition, page 148, it's all about the region, and it talks specifically about Falls Church. And in there, it says that Falls Church is booming. Median home prices year over year are 31.9% up. And then it said demand has boomed as a consequence of the appeal of the public school system and restaurants and other developments. So I think that that was a great thing to sort of see in writing, as sort of a celebration of the work that all of us do, and I'm harkening back to Mary Beth Connolly's zipper analogy. When the school board and the city council work together with the schools and the general government side, really wonderful things happen. This evening, I am going to share our fiscal forecast, and this year we have a little more clarity than we typically do at this point in time. And the reason that we have a little more clarity than we have in the past years is that there are more baked items in our budget than there have been in the past. And specifically, what I mean by that is this past year, and I know there are some members of our FCC EA here tonight, if you wave your hands up and give everybody a hello. We collaboratively worked through a collective bargaining process last year to land in a collective bargaining agreement, which took effect this school year. And so a lot of the items that are in the collective bargaining agreement are somewhat baked in terms of the school system's responsibilities to meet the obligations of that collective bargaining agreement. Additionally, we have some contractual obligations that are currently in place that we feel like we need to continue to take care of, and then we have some current conditions, and then we have growth. So what you'll see tonight are sort of those major drivers of our budget. Again, the collective bargaining agreement, taking care of our employees, contractual obligations, current conditions, and growth. So as I talk about these tonight, I will try to hone in on those a little bit more closely. So the first slide always is an appreciation. I think back to the extraordinary work that the school board and the city council and the general government and the school system have done over the last several years. And a lot of the work wouldn't have been possible without the really great relationships that we've all enjoyed over that period of time. Looking at whether it's the growth and development at the high school site, whether it's thinking about the work that we've done with respect to our revenue sharing agreement and other collaborations, we are so appreciative of our relationship. A couple of things I want to share just right out of the gate that I think sets us apart from the rest of the state is our schools. And I think that that was evident in some ways in that Washingtonian article when it came to the fore. Virginia school districts, Falls Church City Public Schools for the seventh year in a row is the number-one school district in the Commonwealth of Virginia. We were named the second-best district in the DC area to work, I'm sorry, second-best school district in the DC area, and the third-best district to teach in in Virginia. On top of that, I do want to say that recently, within the last three weeks, Oak Street Elementary was ranked as the number-one elementary school in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and Mary Ellen Henderson was ranked as the number-one middle school in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So when I think about the successes that we have, again, our schools are extraordinary places, and for much of the reasons that I think we all know and recognize, it's the people that are in our buildings, it's our families, and it's our community, that really have created some pretty amazing and top-notch schools that all of us can be very proud of. Here are just a couple of curriculum highlights from the 2324 International Baccalaureate Continuum schools. You'll see things in here such as our wax museum at second grade, our PYP exhibitions. We had 56 MYP certificate recipients this past year. You'll see the IB art show, 200 students participating in the Sustainability and Community Awards, and more. I won't go through all of them. But I think this board, I know this board, and I know, I believe that the city council understands, we are one of eight school divisions in the country now that have the International Baccalaureate program pre-K through 12, and are considered a continuum district. And then as a consequence of that, we set ourselves apart yet again in many ways. A couple of other, just sort of informational points for you. This past year, 2324, 276 students. And in our sophomore, junior, senior class, sat for and participated in IB exams, and that is up from the prior year. We had 941 international baccalaureate exams written last year, which is an extraordinary number considering the size of our high school. We had 35 different subjects that were, exams were written in, and we had a 92% hit rate for IB diploma candidates, meaning that we had 64 students that hit the graduation stage as IB diploma candidates, and out of that, 59 of them actually earned that recognition through external adjudication by the IB. This year, just by contrast, we have 74 students that are international baccalaureate diploma candidates, and that is the largest group of IB diploma candidates that we've ever had in the city of Falls Church, and a lot to be proud of. A couple other things in terms of accreditation. Accreditation is typically a fairly low bar, but I think it's important for us to note that accreditation and accountability, as all of you, I think, are aware with respect to your legislative programs, is changing in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and not in a way that's going to be friendly to schools. But some things just to kind of consider here, at Oak Street Elementary School, 95% of our students passed the English SOL, and 94% passed the math SOL. At Henderson, 96% in English, 95% in math, and at the high school, 96 in English, 98% in math. We had an eight-point increase at Oak Street in science last year. We had a 9% increase in chronic absenteeism, which was a state issue over the last couple of years coming out of COVID, to the extent that we really don't have a chronic absenteeism issue in the city of Falls Church with that improvement. Nine of nine of our math reporting groups increased this last year or remained at 100%, and we had the highest-ever math and English rates at Mary Ellen Henderson. So a lot to be proud of there. I won't go into the strategic plan in great detail, but I wanted to make sure you all had it. Up here is our mission and our vision. And then on the next page, you'll see our five strategic focus areas, and just very quickly, it's IB-infused teaching and learning, or IB teaching and learning, wellness, equity and belonging, resource management, continuous improvement, communications and engagement, and investing in our people. So that sort of sets the stage a little bit for where we currently are and where we are existing, and the news is good from the schools. We are, again, the number-one school division for the seventh year in a row in the Commonwealth of Virginia and have a lot to be proud of. So I want to take just a second to run through a couple of enrollment slides, and then I'm going to turn it over to our friend from the Stephen Fuller Institute to talk a little bit more in detail. But let me start with this slide. This is current year enrollment by school. It's a little bit challenging to see, but I would just call your attention to the bottom right-hand corner where it says 2714. It's the second-to-last column. That is the highest enrollment that we've ever experienced in the city of Falls Church schools in the history of city of Falls Church schools. So I think that in and of itself is something to kind of keep your mind around as we think about this. We've never had more kids, and we are really excited about that. There was a variance in projection. This past year, we were anticipating to grow by 85 students. Instead, we grew by 80, so there was a slight variance in projection, but we are continuing to enroll kids each and every day in our schools, particularly now as people are making moves during the winter holidays and over Thanksgiving. This is a trend, just a graphical, a graphic that shows sort of the trend in enrollment. Again, the 2425 enrollment is the highest in the history of Falls Church City Public Schools, and you can see that trend is going up again, as it did starting in 2000, just up to the pandemic. And that's an important piece of information, that we did have the pandemic drop-off, and then we are continuing to grow again. And so who are we serving? And this is really an important chart for all of us to sort of think about. What you'll see on this chart are some instructional service categories, and these are students that typically require a little bit more effort, a little bit more time, and a little bit more staffing on behalf of the city schools to be able to ensure that they're successful. So the first group that you'll see there are students that are economically disadvantaged. These are students that are on free and reduced lunch, changed from the prior year of 14%, and we are now at 13% enrollment of students on free and reduced lunch. And that's the highest rate of poverty we've ever seen in the city of Falls Church schools, again, in the history of Falls Church schools. We saw a growth of students with disabilities, and we are now 14.3% enrollment of students with disabilities. We are a destination district for the State Department and for other agencies, particularly if you have a student with a disability, and we're seeing a rise in students with disabilities, and also a rise in the significant nature of the disabilities that we're seeing. We saw a rise in students on 504 plans, which are not IEP-driven decisions. These are modifications, and also some different things that can happen in the classroom. I'm sorry, the word escaped me all of a sudden, but these are accommodations that are, students that need accommodation in the classroom, and that population grew by 26%, and we have now 9.3% of our students are on 504 plans. So when you add that number together with the students with disabilities, and obviously the students with disabilities require greater service, it's about 25% of our students have some sort of need beyond just general education. ESOL students, these are students who speak a language other than English that are coming to us. The number I want to call out to your attention is that 184. That's the fourth column from the right. That is the highest number of ESOL students we've ever had in the history of Falls Church City Public Schools. You'll see the number of students that are homeschooled. We have less students homeschooling this last year than we had prior year, and we have less students that are paying tuition. So the nature and the needs of the students that we're serving continue to be changing, but not to the extent that we can't serve them. We continue to do the very best we can with the resources we have, but I do think from a contextual perspective, it's important to know that when we see increases in students in poverty, students with disabilities, students with ESOL needs, the requirement for resources goes up. So let me speak a little bit about Weldon Cooper Center. As our board knows, and I think the council knows, we've used the Weldon Cooper Center for the last several decades in terms of planning for growth. Those projections are prepared by the Weldon Cooper Center that is at the University of Virginia. It's also the center that is used to allocate tax dollars from the state to schools. It's important for us to look at because it does include birth data and also membership data from the year but prior. And then they give us what are called progression ratios, and you won't be able to see these very well unless you have them on your screen or in front of you. But I think the thing that I think, well, the thing I want to point out that I think is most important is the bottom line, and that's the 2024 line. And you'll see that if you look at grade one, for example, grade one from the prior year grew by 13% to 113%, grade two to 102%, grade three, 102%, so on and so forth, all the way up to grade 12, which grew to 101%. The point of this bottom line for your information is that every single grade level in Falls Church City Public Schools grew from last year to this year. And that's important as we think about the distribution of students and how things grow across the division. The last thing I want to talk about before I turn it over to Dr. Waters is local housing impact, and this is where the gap in information falls with the Weldon Cooper Center. And that is that the Weldon Cooper Center currently shows a projection of an increase of 49 students. However, the one thing that Weldon Cooper doesn't take into account is any impact to local housing. So as we know, we have a number of housing units that are coming online, and so that was the rationale that the city manager and I had put together a couple of years ago to be able to get the Stephen Fuller Center involved, to do a much deeper dive and a more granular look at where we are with respect to our growth and enrollment. And I want to thank Dr. Waters for being with us tonight. He is also responsible for, and in a good way, projecting the 85-student growth last year. We missed that mark by five, and he's going to talk a little bit about that, but it was much closer than we would have been had we used the Weldon Cooper Center's modeling. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Waters, and then I'll take it back when he's done.
Thank you for having me, and thank you for having me back. It's nice to see the school board again, and then most of the city council. I've seen several of you recently. So the broad picture, actually, before I get started, is that we're doing the same thing that we did last year, which is typically the case, but the nuance is effectively the same, and Dr. Noonan talked about it a little bit. But effectively, you are moving back towards pre-pandemic grade progression ratios at the same time that quite a bit of housing stock has come online. So you have two forces moving at the same time. It makes this more exciting to try to forecast this, but my numbers will be notably larger than the Weldon Coopers. And the broader, the broadest takeaway that I want you to walk away with is that while doing this, I think my concern in the back of my head is that I'm still below what could be. Okay, so I will walk through what we're going to do and how I did it. Happy to take any questions, but the number will be larger next year, and I am somewhat concerned that maybe I've even underestimated, even though it's notably larger than the Weldon Cooper Center. And I'll walk through why that's the case. So effectively, what we're doing is what I've just called the development pipeline method, and so it's just three simple steps. We estimate new housing. This is data that comes from the city of Falls Church. Then we estimate the number of households, which is to say we apply vacancy rates to housing units. And then we apply school generation rates to the housing stock that we've effectively built up on this database. So breaking this down a little bit more, and I believe you guys have these charts in front of you, so hopefully you can squint or just flip the page. The two things that are coming online this year, or that came online this year, Broad and Washington, and then West Falls Church should be open any day. I don't follow it quite that closely, but I believe it's open soon. It's a moving target. The two things on these, and then Founder's Row is coming on sometime in next year, the two things that I, well, actually, the only thing that I really want to draw your attention to right now is that I've been watching Broad and Washington just over the last few months, and so that opened in June. And just watching it over the past few months, the vacancy rate has ticked down on this, on CoStar data, if anybody plays around with that for fun like I do, whatever. It's been ticking down from 61.5%, and today it was at 56%. And so broadly speaking, this will probably stabilize sometime in late winter or early spring. There are other economic forces at work, which we'll probably talk about at the end of this, that make this a little even more exciting. And then Founder's Row, we've basically just kind of followed along the vacancy rates with the recent additions. So looking out further, and then the other thing is we've, for the long-term projections, effectively what we've done is just followed kind of the recent patterns, and then just what we know is going to be coming online in the next few years, or what's in the development pipeline. We basically make some assumptions about that, and then just continue out with those assumptions in the long-term future, based on effectively the current rate of development. You guys do have, I believe, enough capacity in your schools for the foreseeable future, so there's nothing to panic about there. The one thing that we didn't have data on last year, that we have better data on, was the development of T-zones. And so that was a new policy last year. We had no idea exactly how that was going to play out. Those numbers ticked up a little bit, but that's not going to massively change the estimates. And then so looking out, these are our household estimates. It's a fairly dry routine where we just apply vacancy rates. As Dr. Noonan said, Falls Church is an incredibly desirable community, and I am not here to pander to the crowd. It is just a matter of fact. Your vacancy rate is effectively zero for all practical purposes. You know, maybe people are on vacation or just not happen to be home, you know, type of thing, but you have a very low vacancy rate. And then so we estimate the school enrollment based on the type of housing stock in the city of Falls Church. And last year, we compared it against census data. We did the same thing this year. The school system, Kristen and Kim have a remarkable dataset. They should be commended on that. I mean, it's incredibly detailed. You guys have all sorts of stuff in front of you. I can talk about all sorts of decimal points if you would like, but the data that you all have is dramatically better than survey data from the Census Bureau, so we went with that. That being said, the one thing, the last bullet point is the most important. That is going to be the pre-pandemic generation rates result in higher school enrollment forecasts, and it does appear to be the case that we are moving back to a pre-pandemic generation rate environment. And so that is what causes me concern, or not concern, that's what, I'm trying to be as right as I can, so it's the one thing that's, you know, is the most mystery. And so for that reason, we've again generated two forecasts using two different generation rates. We're using the generation rates for 2024. We look at those particularly for next year, which is, at the moment, the most important. But then we also use an average of 2018, 2019 generation rates for single-family dwelling, condos, apartments, and townhomes. If you can see on the screen or on the paper in front of you, single-family is relatively flat. Those generation rates are little changed. The housing stock in single-family is relatively little changed. Condo apartment, that is going to be where the largest variation occurs. So in particular, if you just look at, you know, either one of the condo and apartment lines, what you'll see is the generation rates ticked down from 3.6, 0.361, down to 0.3, and then the pandemic happens, and we go to 0.25, 0.24, 0.22. That isn't, it doesn't seem like maybe a lot, but given the number of multifamily housing, either condo or apartments, it makes a really large difference. So that is actually what drives most of the variation. And so for this reason, we've gone ahead and forecast using this pre-pandemic, oh, well, actually, let me say one more thing, and what you'll notice is, on the condo and apartment, you get down to 0.22, it ticks back up to 0.24 in 2023, and then 0.2- it ticks back up to point two four in twenty twenty-three, and then point two five in twenty twenty-four. So it is starting to go back up. This is something that I raised last year, and it was a, it was definitely a thing that we saw last year, and it did happen, and it very likely can continue to happen this year. Another way of seeing this is by looking at monthly enrollment data. So you are, these data are slightly delayed, and they're slightly different. They, they bounce around a little bit based on, you know, people enrolling and disenrolling and so forth and so on. But you're effectively back to pre-pandemic rates at the moment. And what you'll notice is that, oh, and this actually, this also ends in March of twenty twenty-four. But the thing that I'd like to draw your attention to is the time that I was here last year. So if you look at September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, through effectively the end of the year, what you're noticing is that line is going up. So this, your enrollments were increasing literally while I was sitting with you last year. You know, like, there were kids coming to be part of the best school system of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Like, this, this is, it's a real, you know, it's a real draw to your community, and it was occurring while we were here last year, and no housing stock was coming online right then. Which is to say, you, you hold the housing stock constant, and school enrollment goes up, that's what's driving this generation rate, right? This is, those are just the two bits, housing stock, you know, it's number of kids divided by number of houses.
Dr. Waters, is it okay to ask some questions?
Yeah.
So thank you for this. Being a numbers geek, I did spend some time looking at this. I think it's slide forty-seven, for those of you looking electronically. So we also have people generation rates that I think our school friends put together. Is there a reason why you use blended ratios versus the detailed kind of per-unit type ratios?
Yes, I'm happy you asked. The...
I asked this last year.
I know you did. That's why I was prepared this year. I remember that. So if you, if you look at the, it's sort of the second half of the, there's a bunch of decimal points. I don't know what number it is because it's not on here, but if you look at the decimal points on the generation rates on this, the individual unit types, right? I stared at those for a really long time and did all sorts of various blending of them. We did try, I actually went through and did some of the forecasts, actually, before they were even, the school assistant, Kim was in the process of updating the data, and I actually just started like guessing at some of them before it happened. So I manually went through. But then we also did try to forecast using those. The issue is, is that they are just so idiosyncratic, and the sample sizes are just so small that it makes it less, it, it makes it, for me, it made it far less reliable. And not only that, it actually, these are kind of competing statements, so now I regret being so excited that you asked a question. When you look at them directly, it's just so noisy that it doesn't give you a strong sense of what's going on, but it ultimately provides roughly a similar answer. If you, if you look at all those decimal points, they all generally went up. So it doesn't really matter if you add, you know, if you, if you try to add them up from the bottom or you add them up from the top, but the problem with adding them up from the bottom is because there is so much noise, the trend isn't quite so strong. And we got close enough last year that I hesitated to change it, but we, I did forecast this a bunch of different ways and settled on the blended ratio, just because it, it feels the most right.
The reason why it matters, this is an area that I've always been really happy to see collaboration between the school and the general government, is that from all the historical data, I guess we've been doing mixed-use development in twenty years now, an apartment is not an apartment, right? So if you look at the generation rates for, say, Founder's Row, Madera, which has stabilized now, so a one-bedroom has a generation rate of point zero two as of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and one stabilized, a two-bedroom with den is point six. That's a thirty X difference. And so this is why, in my opinion, the detailed data is really helpful to understand that when you're opening, obviously, a studio or one-bedroom, it generates much different than a two-bedroom with den, which behaves more like a single-family home.
Yes.
So given that we have this data, I think it's terrific. I appreciate the collaboration with the schools to get to this level of granularity, because I think for the fiscal analysis that we do with every project, that's where we use this detailed data.
The, well, I'm, so to, to, I'm, for this particular one, this is Chris, I think this is probably Kristen's favorite chart. Kim, I think this is your favorite chart, too. You guys can both have the same favorite chart. The three bedrooms that you see at the bottom, the dark blue and Pearson, for the ones that, for the units that are coming online with West Falls Church and Broad and Washington, I, we did dig into the, the CoStar data and applied generation rates by unit type and held twenty twenty-four enrollment constant and just added on like, okay, well, what if just those units that are coming on by, by type, whether or not they have a den makes a large difference, it gives, and that was the lowest number I could come up with. That was a hundred and twenty. So we did use these data, but for the final number, it just made the most sense to use the blended ratio. But no, you, you were spot on. It's, there's a lot of ways that you could go about this. Was this, I can keep going if you...
Yep, I'm glad someone else has their chart.
And she's, she'll, she probably is happy to talk to you about it afterwards, I assume. So the takeaway here is the monthly, the monthly enrollment numbers while I was here last year started going up even though nothing had come online during that period. And it is, you know, for various things, and you can go through the, the data that Letty was just talking about and see it for yourself. But another way of thinking about the single-family not, the single-family generation rate not changing much is that there's just not that much turnover in Falls Church. You guys have about five home sales per month. It's just not very much, people don't want to leave. If you buy a house here, you don't want to leave Falls Church. It is, I'm not here to pander to the crowd, it's very nice. Added on top of that, the fact that a lot of people refinanced with a two-point-seven percent mortgage rate, they're never moving. They can't afford to move, you know, they like their house, they love their mortgage. There's just very few home sales, so there's not a lot of turnover which kids then would move into. To your point, Letty, and this is something that Kristen and I talk kind of a lot about, is that there's, there was actually like a bump in, there was a surprisingly large number of high school kids that we didn't, that we didn't see for completely unknown reasons, and I spent quite a bit of time trying to track those down. And one of the theories on why there might have been this sort of burst of high school kids would be actually this chart of it is just quite expensive to live here, and so people might not be able to afford a house until those high school years, but then they try to get into the high school. I was never able to track down the exact reason why this happened, although we did spend quite a, quite a bit of time, including asking around some private schools and this type of stuff. Some things are just a mystery. With that being said, so I think that's all the background that I would like to give. What I am forecasting for next year is going to be that top-line number, and that will be an enrollment of twenty-eight seventy-three, which is an increase of one hundred and fifty-nine students, which is notably higher, obviously, than the Weldon Cooper number of forty-nine. So while I got reasonably close this year, I'm sticking my neck out a little further for next year, being so much further off. But what I will say is that I am, again, concerned that, you know, for, for the most likely, which is that top-line number, I'm using the twenty twenty-four enrollment rates. I'm being somewhat conservative regarding vacancy rates with West Falls Church and Broad and Washington, which is why I've been watching them on CoStar. It could go much higher. If the generation rates continue to tick back up, particularly in the apartments, that second enrollment number that I've given there, which is the enrollment with twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen generation rates, that could go up to as much as twenty-nine ninety-seven, not sure why I said it that way, two thousand nine hundred ninety-seven, effectively three, three thousand, which would be an increase of two hundred and eighty-three students. I'm, there's enough upside surprise there that that very well could happen, and watching the monthly enrollment numbers would be a very useful exercise to make sure that there are enough teachers making this, and then we've, I did change this year, I'm happy to go directly at it, to talk to the school board about this. The down ballot, the, the individual grades, I missed enough on my forecast last year that I actually changed my methodology this year and spent a lot of time staring at those numbers. So I am more optimistic that they're going to be far closer than they were last year. So, so the bottom numbers actually, the distribution, the way I shared out the top-line number changed a bit, but we're reasonably happy with that. I'm, I am happy with those. Looking at these visually, the gray line up top is what I'm talking about with using that pre-pandemic generation rate. So what we did was we, she went back and said, okay, well, what would have school enrollment been in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, you know, so forth and so on, had you had the same generation rate as you did in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen? And what you are seeing is that the black line, which is actual enrollment, is starting to move back towards that gray line. The orange line is our, is my best guess, that I'm happy to defend. The Weldon Cooper number is the blue, is the blue number there at the bottom. Well, the twenty-seven fourteen was the enrollment, the actual enrollment, and the Weldon Cooper would be that plus forty-nine. I, I cannot envision a scenario where you have an increase of that few students. So I think it is going to be notably higher. And, you know, didn't, it didn't really matter how I went about it. I could not make the number that small. So I will open it up for questions, hand it back to Dr. Noonan. You guys tell me what to do. You can kick me out.
Any questions?
I just have one. I have to actually fall on my sword, because wearing my school's hat this morning, I assured Peter that this was the largest enrollment we ever had, was twenty-seven fourteen, but now I see twenty-seven, twenty-one, twenty sixteen. So twenty-seven fourteen is not the largest enrollment FCCPS has ever had. It's twenty-seven, twenty-one in like twenty sixteen.
That was the September enrollment date, though.
Yeah, the, the monthly...
The twenty-seven fourteen is the September enrollment date?
Right. And the twenty-seven, twenty-one is the...
We've gone up since...
Oh, that was the March enrollment date.
That was the monthly data, yeah.
Okay. There you go.
It's twenty-seven, twenty-one.
March enrollment date. Where is that? Okay.
I'm happy to go on from here? Okay. Great.
And it really is more theoretical, and just thinking about housing policy and incenting people to stay in their single-family homes when they become, you know, empty nesters and to, to how we, how we incent people to stay, because your generation rates in single-family homes, they've stayed pretty consistent, but could they even drop if you were better able to maintain non-school-age population once, I don't know, say, somebody like me graduates their kids who are lifers and stays on for another ten years or however long? Presumably, that would lower your generation rate per single-family home. Is that how it happens in other districts that might have, not be so expensive for people to stay in their homes?
That was an interesting question that I might say, I'll give you an answer, whether or not it's going to be satisfactory.
I mean, you can, you can report back, just thinking future policy, something we've discussed on city councils, how you, how you keep people in past their, their years where they have students.
So it is...
I mean, mortgage rates doing it for some, but I, you know, there's still plenty of people, as soon as their kids are out of high school, they're like, can't wait to sell it to the next person, but it looks pretty stable, so I don't know that that's made a huge difference in the past five years.
So I hesitate to give the answer, because it's going to be kind of an, I don't know. Do you guys cap, tax rating? Tech, they float?
No.
So, so where I'm, so I'm born, Michigan, like the, your, your tax can only increase so much per year. And so that has, and so Maine, for example, doesn't do this. There are trade-offs to this, as with anything, and so the intent of, I used to know the name of it, now I'm blanking on it. Anyway, the intent of it is to keep people in their homes longer, so like, your, your tax can only increase so much. And it does actually do that, but it does have several knock-on effects. Is it, I was talking to somebody at a conference, I actually have not read their papers, so this is a little, I'm getting pretty far out on this branch, is that it does slow economic growth. From personal experience, I have noticed that it has knock-on effects regarding the distribution, as you said, of who stays in their home and who leaves. In vacation communities, it tends to, and also it gets transferred down to children. You can, you can keep people in their homes, but it has these, it has side effects of, it starts to make the distribution of who's paying taxes sort of like bimodal, where some people who've had their home forever are paying very low taxes to keep them in their homes, but then the newcomers pay very high taxes effectively to make up the difference. That has all sorts of other side effects, but at the regional level, which is generally what we study, our high tax, our high housing rates are already causing, have already caused our economy effectively to stagnate, and we are curious to see how things play out over the next year or two as well. So I'm not sure if that's a great answer, but that's the one that comes off the top of my head.
Thank you. Just two other quick questions to ask now, or?
Okay.
On, can you point me to where we talk about the, the rate of growth beyond, obviously, we're having a huge surge in housing immediately, and when we think about future housing, like where else we can, where else could you possibly put more apartments, or when we're looking at other types of policies for housing? How are, how are you making those assessments, like you're all the way up to twenty fifty? Could you just, I'm sure it's in here and I missed it, but...
So it's on, it's on step one. I try to lay it out in both a detailed enough manner that you can see what assumptions that I've made, and you can poke holes in them, and that's perfectly fine. But I mean, effectively, you know, my experience in planning and dealing with planners reasonably often is there's a shocking amount of space places, and I think people drive past it so often that you kind of stop seeing it. And so the Gordon Triangle, did I get that? I kept calling it the Golden Triangle last year.
That's DC.
The Gordon Triangle, for example, has quite a bit of space. It is very metro accessible, so this is a place that could, that is a...
This comes from our planning department.
This came, this came through, effectively, what I've done is I've taken the pace of planning over the last, say, ten, fifteen years, and applied it forward within various constraints, and those constraints have basically been the availability of housing, the rate at, you know, the rate at which it is being approved, but really like, you know, land, it was pretty in-depth discussions with Paul, who's moved on to, Paul Stoddard, who moved on to Alexandria, but it was pretty in-depth discussions with him to try to effectively forecast out those long, those long-term housing.
Okay, great. So this is a lot had come from Paul as well. And then the last question for the moment was looking at the number of our, and I don't know if we have data this granular, but on the, our rate of poverty and looking at the new students who have, like, that huge jump, and obviously, I spent a lot of time thinking about those students in the Family Assistance Fund perspective with the Education Foundation. I know that there's a big jump this year. Do we have any idea if these students are, because I can keep, think of a couple of reasons. Are they new to Falls Church? Are their families slipping from where they were socio-economically before? Or what was the other, do you have any more information, any more granularity or knowledge about how we can support those students or where they're coming from?
I, I don't know that I have any more granularity about the why, but I, but I can tell you that we are supporting those students the same way that we've supported students in poverty previously.
The other thought I had was the communications that may have been better, you know, when we went through COVID and everybody was supported through, you know, breakfast and lunch from a federal funding side, and when that ended, there were folks that were like, oh, this really helped our families, helped our students, and maybe more people were aware of this as a program or as an ability to receive services. Just trying to think through, I mean, I'm glad, I'm thrilled that we're supporting them, and I'm confident that you are, but just trying to think through how that might impact our, our numbers and resources needed to support them.
I, I think we've bounced back from the COVID, I think, the COVID numbers, so I think this is a pretty stable number in terms of we're not seeing families that sort of waited to see kind of how things were going, which I think you might be getting at a little bit, remember, Hiscott, but... But, you know, we could, we could, you know, I could, I could check in with our social workers and see kind of if they have a sense of why we're seeing more students in poverty. But I don't think it's because we moved from free lunch to having to file lunch, the lunch paperwork going forward.
Okay. Just thinking about, you know, as we can make other considerations, like for the welcoming Falls Church families and some of the other policies that we're attempting, just need to keep in mind where that might impact school services. So I think those are all my questions for now. Thank you very much.
Laura?
Thank you so much, Dr. Waters. I, when you were talking about the people who might live in their homes for 30 years and then they finally move out, and one of the things that, you know, it happens in no time, a developer swoops in, buys that lot and knocks it down and builds a humongous five bedroom house. And, you know, that is one of the drivers, obviously, of enrollment. Do you, or does the city, might be Wyatt question, I'm not sure, but look at how many lots we still have where the land is more valuable than the structure and project that out as that will be a tear down and a huge house coming up? Some, they seem to be, just one by a member, Hiscoc and I, a block or two away, what was actually a nice little vacant lot and all of a sudden there's this huge house on it within the past two weeks. So I didn't know if that's something that you, that, you know, long term.
We did not look at that long term. That's an interesting, I could spend a lifetime examining just that. And actually, I think the Washington Post had an article today about, there was a really nice, I forget the name of it, but we did not look at that as the short answer. I will say, the only thing that I'll say on that is that most of the variation is coming out of multifamily. So yes, that is happening, but the, the big swing was in, was predominantly multifamily.
Okay, thank you.
And driven by COVID.
Thank you.
And I will just add, we do have that data. It's presented in a map form with sort of GIS sort of heat shading in terms of kind of where those houses are. And, and we can share that with you. Now, having that folded into enrollment projections, I don't think we've taken that, that step because there's just so many factors at play. It's difficult to...
Yes, I understand that.
Wyatt doesn't want to spend that much time.
But it, it is...
Turn it over to you. On a pro bono basis.
And Dr. Noonan, I had a quick question for you. In terms of, I know we've talked about the, we have the physical capacity. Do you feel that is, in each school, we have capacity? Because I've heard sort of that, that things might be getting tight at Oak Street.
I, I believe we have the capacity. I don't know, I haven't walked the building, looking at it from a space perspective, but I have seen a number of spaces throughout the building that are being used for things that could be repurposed for classrooms. And I don't, I don't see space as an issue. I would say at our secondary schools, when you look at space utilization, most of our teachers have their own classrooms and use those classrooms for five periods a day, and then they're vacant for a couple of periods a day. So there's, there's lots of strategies to use the space most effectively. So I don't anticipate that we have an issue relative to space in our schools. We can accommodate the students that we're getting.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow up on that one? Because I had the same question. I know, you know, when we've talked before, you haven't sort of had the concern about physical capacity, and the concern has been more on the, you know, resources for students, for growing student enrollment in the schools and everything that comes with that from teachers and buses and, you know, extracurriculars, co-curriculars. But when we look at things, and I looked at the cap, like the population, enrollment caps at Mount Daniel and Oak Street, and it looks like, you know, we're at 74% of what physical capacity could be at Mount Daniel or 79% at what physical capacity could be at Oak Street. When you're talking about, you know, getting up closer to what physical capacity is, are you talking about and in your mind, thinking about holding classroom, because we've talked about this before too, wanting to kind of keep classroom sizes smaller as a hallmark of the district? Are you talking about physical capacity where you're repurposing space and classroom sizes are still low? Are you talking about as you grow in physical capacity over time, that we're really thinking about populating the actual classrooms more than they're currently populated with kids?
The prior, not the latter. I, I don't, I mentioned raising class size is sort of the third rail in the city of Falls Church and something that I'm not interested in looking at. That being said, it's one of the very few ways that we have an opportunity to cut our budget because 85 to almost 88% of our budget isn't people. But when I think about our capacity, it's not by raising class sizes in classrooms. It's about utilizing the space that's at the site.
Any other questions? School friends? Jared?
And may I, I was going to note, Mr. Schneider has his hand up.
Go ahead, David.
David?
Sure. Thank you very much for these numbers. First question is more of a technical question. The units up on the West End are within walking distance of the region's best high school and middle school. And have you, do you think that might tend to increase the pupil generation rate particularly for those units? That's question number one. And question number two, we've talked about facilities, and I assume Dr. Noonan will talk about all the professionals, teachers, counselors and others that will be needed at these various projection levels, which I'd be interested in seeing, and I assume that's coming. But I guess the first question is, have you, it, it seems to me highly possible that particularly the units on the West End, and there are hundreds of them, both condos and rental units may even have a higher generation rate than we see across the city. Thanks.
So I'll answer the first one, I think. Dr. Noonan, I'll get the second. The West Falls Church and the Alder, which is the name of the condo, that could go either way. We looked at West Falls Church by, that was, I had mentioned it when Letty was bringing up the generation rates by, by building type. We actually looked at it not only by building type for West Falls Church, but also by num, we applied bedroom specific generation rates to the number of bedrooms in the unit. So we knew there were going to be X amount of three bedrooms, X amount of two bedrooms, X amount of one bedrooms. And came up with, that was where we came up with, you know, when we just looked at West Falls Church in Bond, Washington and used hyper-specific generation rates, that was how we got the smallest number, which I believe was in the mid 120s, which was still notably larger than what UVA suggested. So we looked at West Falls Church really closely, and the thing that I'll say where it could go either way is yes, you could have a scenario where because it is so close to such a desirable high school, it's walking distance to a metro, you could have it be the case that you have more high school kids going into that building. However, on the flip side, it could also be the case that you have somebody working in a, a professional job that requires two bedrooms. Okay? And so I know personally several people who work in the banking industry, and they actually have to have a separate room for their work. So they actually rent a two bedroom apartment, even though they're a, what's it called? A dink? A dual income couple, whatever? Anyway, so they only need one bedroom, they have no children, but they, they buy it, they rent a two bedroom so that he can have an office. Because of the other amenities that you have in Falls Church, as Dr. Noonan spoke about earlier, including restaurants and this type of stuff, that's also a big draw. I mean, this is also part of the reason why there's some senior housing coming online, which we did not include, but there's a lot of reasons to be here. So it could go a bunch of different ways, but I will say that we looked at West Falls Church and the Adler, Adler very specifically, and it didn't change things dramatically. That's, that is actually part of the reason that like mid 120 number is why I ended up leaning towards a, you know, 160-ish increase in students as opposed to something closer to 300. So I hope that satisfies that answer.
And then the answer to your second question is yes, you bet. That's coming.
Jared?
Thanks for all the data. I know you've brought it into us several times, but I was just taking a look at the students by dwelling unit, and this is probably a useful context for, for everyone, but in FY 2017, there were about 1,100 students in the total, for all multifamily. And that's before, I think, the 455, the Founder's Row in Broad and Washington were even open. And so I was just taking a look and seeing what, what would have happened if those hadn't opened, and we would have 932 students not kind of, in, in all of total multifamily. We have 1025 because there are 93 students coming from those three apartments. And so obviously there's lots of capacity in the already kind of apartment, or already built apartment complexes to flex a little bit more. We're kind of missing about 180 students since 2017 almost from those buildings. And so, so, and as you mentioned, there's kind of lots of error, error rates around kind of estimating specific, specific generation rates from specific units. But I'm curious as to, I mean, given that's an entire grade level, you know, what, what do the error bands look like around these point estimates?
So this is, this is where it becomes more art than science. I'm not going to give, I, I didn't give you an error band. I'm not going to. Is, is it going to be the short answer? This is, I mean, this is effectively where I've given you kind of the top end of like 299 or 298, whatever it is. Because there are several things moving at, at the same time, and that is where the generation rate, you know, I mean, we could go about it econometrically and forecast it. I think that would only be good maybe for next year. But the issue, my issue with doing something of that nature is, is just the issue around the generation rate and specifically around COVID. COVID, you know, COVID, it's like this, it's this unique thing that you don't really know how it's going to truly affect the model. This is why I just stared at the numbers for several weeks, talked to Kristin. So the error bars, while I could give you a standard deviation and that would be fine, I've opted to give you kind of an upper bound and just suggest that this is something that you need to look out for, and I would very much consider watching the monthly enrollment datas. And if it continues to tick up January, February, March, you know, once West Falls Church actually comes online, if that starts to tick up reasonably quickly, then you can start to, and look at the other house, you know? I mean, well, the enrollment, I think the monthly enrollment is just, I don't think that's by housing type, but just watch monthly enrollment because that will give you a strong sense of where that generation rate is, if it's going to be lower like COVID or if it's going to be pre-COVID. So yeah, I hate to say I'm not going to give you one, but I'm, I'm not going to give one because, yeah.
I'm going to ask you the same question I asked you four weeks ago, but now it's four weeks later, which is the macroeconomics question, to the extent you can crystal ball. What is happening across, what is, seems to be happening across the federal government and how that's going to affect not just Virginia in general, but Falls Church, which is its own unique microcosm?
Yeah. So I'll give you roughly the same answer I gave you four weeks ago, or whenever it was. Nice to see you again. Falls Church, and I've told several people this, my opinion and my crystal ball varies subtly from Terry's, and I'll make a, I'll make a, my boss, Terry Clower, or me. We're both balding dudes. I don't know, we look a lot alike, which is not good for me, or him, actually. Mine is less dire than his. We'll send out Economy Watch tomorrow, which is going to be hyper abbreviated. It's this monthly thing that we put out. I'm less dire. I think it's going to be flat for the next couple of years, for all sorts of reasons that I could pontificate on and can. But Falls Church, I think, will be relatively flat. Northern Virginia will be relatively flat. DC could go either way. If you have people on the metro five days a week, it's going to generate a lot more activity downtown. But then if people get laid off or quit or are shifted out of the area, that would obviously drive down the number of employees downtown. You know, the federal government is not the only one that is mandating five days a week. Amazon obviously also is. From my perspective, I can't imagine a scenario where suburban Maryland does well. So I think that's going to be the, I personally think that is going to be the hardest hit. So that is my opinion. It does, it is less dire than Terry's. I, I wrote the intro to Economy Watch. He was like, this isn't negative enough, and he just deleted it and started over. And he will, and we usually do like, these are the things that we're concerned about in the next like couple of months, which is like, we're not building enough housing recently, regionally, and so it's just very expensive. But this is a national issue as well, so we're not alone. But Dr. Clower, along with developers, economic developers from both sides of the river, various leaders from around the region are giving a economic forecast with the Northern Virginia Transportation Alliance on Wednesday morning at the Westwood Country Club. You are all welcome to come. It should be exciting, and you can listen to Terry's opinions, which are less sort of like blah than mine. But I, you know, my, my crystal ball is things are not going, things are not going to be great, but I can't foresee a like just complete decimation of it. I grew up in Michigan, like I know what it looks like, like Flint, you know? That's not going to happen. The one, actually, the one thing, and I don't know if I told you this last time, I feel like I did, the one thing that Terry and I absolutely agree on, and we saw in the, in the previous federal administration, and this will bleed directly into enrollment numbers probably not in 2020, September 2025, but maybe 2026. The clampdown, and they're getting, you know, obviously a little bit more vocal about their intentions around it, the clampdown on immigration actually hit the DC area pretty, pretty hard. And so what we saw was actually the population in the region declined, and it's driven by two facts. One, it's extremely expensive to live here. So we see, we've seen now for 11 straight years, net domestic outmigration. And so that is people moving from a county within the US to another county within the US. That has been going on now for 11 years, I think it was 2012, 13? Don't hold me to that. I can't look at the chart. I can see it. But what you really see is during the last time the administration was here, in 2017, there was a big drop off in net international in migration. And so accelerated domestic outmigration paired with way less in migration actually really stalled out our population. I suspect if I dug around in numbers enough that I could see this occurring, and so that would actually put a little less pressure on school enrollment numbers because there was just, it is very expensive to live here if you have net domestic outmigration. That's going to be fewer people trying to like push in, and then the international in migration is going to sort of, that'd be like the B poll numbers, second language stuff. Anyway, that would be, that is the one thing that I am certain of, is that our population will, our population growth will chill out a little bit over the next couple of years. It was a really long winded answer. I could say more, but I think that's probably...
This, the fact that Falls Church is so geographically contained and has a unitary school system insulate us or make us more exposed?
I think what insulates you is the desirability of the community. It's, it, that is, that is the one thing that insulates you. And Northern Virginia's economy is generally doing better, and because you are well embedded within Northern Virginia's economy, that is something that is less of a concern than places in suburban Maryland or even the district. But just the general, I'm not here to toot your horn, but you guys are doing a great job, both, you know, the city and the school sides. You guys are doing great. People want to live here. So I suspect it will continue, but there are a lot of unknowns. You can come listen to Terry, he'll give you more doom and gloom.
Justine?
So I have one quick question on the chart that's a little bit up on the current year enrollment, just simply on a definition. FY 24 actual versus enrollment as of 9/30/24? I guess you can keep going up. Actually, maybe it's in, it's in Peter's slides. There it is. That's it. Yeah. What, how do you define FY 20 for actual versus enrollment as of 2020, 9/30/24? of 2020, 9/30/24?
Yeah, these are all the September 1 dates. So it's the, or September 30th, 2023 is the FY '24 date.
Okay. So FY, I gotcha. So this would be enrollment as of 9/30/2024 is FY '25?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Sometimes these FY numbers don't always sync up with me. I'm also wondering, I know that there were staffing reductions during COVID on the school side. Given that school enrollment is similar to where it was eight years ago, do you know how staffing now versus eight years ago?
We're pretty close.
It's about the same level?
About the same level.
Okay. Thank you. Is it, do you have charts on that? Is that something?
I don't.
You don't? Okay.
But if you wanted to submit that as a budget question, we could certainly take a look at it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Are there final questions for Dr. Waters? Great. Thank you for joining us.
I think he's going to finish the presentation, so. All right. So where does that, where does that leave us? Yeah, yeah. That didn't go. So where does that leave us? And I just want to say, first of all, thank you for this very, I think, rich and robust conversation. I think it, what I'm, what I am taking away from all of this, and what I took away from the conversation with the school board several weeks ago, and what I've taken away from everything that Dr. Waters has shared, is that our enrollment is going to go up. So we're at this place where are we going to look at the blue line, the yellow line, or the, or the gray line? And I think the safest, not the safest, the most conservative line, well, actually, that's not true. Let me just say this. We're going to use the yellow line, which is the 2873 number for our, is it 2873? For our enrollment projection for next year. So when I think about what that means for us, I would just hearken back to the way that I sort of set this presentation up. It's sort of in a couple of parts. We have the collective bargaining agreement, we have contractual obligations, we have current conditions, and we have growth. So, so let me start with our contractual obligations. And these are contractual obligations that we agreed to in a really collaborative way with our Falls Church Education Association. So some of the things you'll see on here, particularly the top four, have been codified in a collective bargaining agreement. And that is that each year, all of our staff will get a step increase. That's something that we've done every year but one. The first year I was here as superintendent, but every year since then, we've done a step increase. We are locked into a cost of living adjustment that's based on the CPI. And this year's CPI, taken on October 15th, is 2.5%. So that 2.5% becomes the cost of living adjustment. When you take those two factors into account, that's a roughly 5% increase across the board for all of our employees. Additionally, we offer a 1% match to our 403B plan. And then lastly, we have increased the homebound teacher pay for, for our teachers. And those are four things that were in the collective bargaining agreement that we feel like were really important for our staff, but also things that we had done previously and felt confident that we could continue to do. Some additional obligations that we have, we have some members that are on the city retirement, and Ms. Mester, thank you for your work on the city retirement. That cost is going to go up just ever so slightly. We have some members that have left Falls Church City Public Schools that are part of a legacy transitional retirement program. We're anticipating a 10% increase in health insurance costs. And then, as I mentioned earlier about our special needs students, we have an increasing number of students that need more than the City of Falls Church can offer with respect to the continuum of services relative to their needs. So we are needing to place some of our, more of our students that we have in the past in private day programs. So there is about a $300,000 increase for special education with respect to those private day programs and IEPs. One thing I want to just call the attention to, to the board and to the city council, is that that 5% overall increase for our staff, which is a two, the step increase in the 2.5% cost of living adjustment, actually is not, doesn't appear to be competitive this year with the region. And that is, that is going to potentially present a problem for us going forward. What we did see in the presentation that was done by Fairfax County is that they are anticipating a 7% increase as part of their collective bargaining agreement for all of their employees. And then Loudon, Prince William County, Alexandria, Arlington also have collective bargaining agreements, and they are looking at pushing between 8% and 9% increases for their employees. So we are on the very, very low end with our obligations as part of our collective bargaining agreement. So I just want to put that out there, because for us to remain competitive, we have to give at least this 5% to, to our employees. The second piece of this is the enrollment growth, and this is kind of Mr. Snyder's question, and here it is, Mr. Snyder. We are anticipating, based on the enrollment growth of 159 students, that we are going to need an additional four and a half teachers, another school counselor, an additional special education teacher, and an additional paraprofessional to go with it, additional instructional materials and supplies to accommodate the additional students, and additional money towards an assistant athletic director in, in our efforts to create a full-time assistant athletic director position, because we have many more students that are doing activities and athletics in our schools than we've ever had, two additional in the transportation office, two, one bus driver, one bus aide, and an additional car driver. And those car drivers are the folks that are responsible for taking kids back and forth to those private day placements. So, so that's the enrollment portion of, of what our needs are. Then we get into our current obligations. And these are ongoing activities that we're doing now, right, as part of our work. We have a psychological services contract. We have added three additional paraprofessionals to take care of the needs of some of our students that have special needs and need some extra support. We've added an additional English speaker of other languages. This was one that actually came out of the ARPA funds that we've been carrying, that we need to turn into a regular full-time position, considering we have the largest number of ESOL students that we've, than we've ever had. A .5 academic, advanced academic coordinator. This year, we're coming up on our five-year lease renewal for our Apple MacBooks. So we need $123,000 to do that. Additional textbook funds for the additional students, utilities, property, vehicle, and liability insurance adjustments based on inflation, converting our assistant legal specialist from an hourly position to a permanent position. So that 27,750 is a benefits cost. And then finally, we did find some savings in there of salary lapse of $344,000 to help offset some of those costs. And then the last piece is enhancements. And these are new things that we need in the system, again, that I would consider part of growth. As I mentioned at the beginning of the conversation, we are one of eight school divisions in the country that are pre-K-12 international baccalaureate programs. We currently have a program coordinator at the high school, at the middle school, and one for all of the elementaries, the two elementary schools and the preschool. Last year, this was not a funded position in our budget. We put it back in this year because we have more students at the elementary school than we've had, and we really feel like having a PYP, additional PYP coordinator is really important. Based on the number of ESOL students that we are seeing come into our system, particularly at elementary school, we would like, we're considering adding a .5 resource and engagement specialist at Mount Daniel Elementary School that doesn't have any parent liaison there, looking at $100,000 for school board initiative work that they've been talking about and taking on, and then $75,000 in additional athletic materials and supplies. That is another category that is also part of the growth category. At the bottom, you'll see a final bullet that says that we received additional budget requests exceeding $1 million. Those, that $1 million additional request did not make it into what I'm going to share with you tonight. Those were additional requests that we received from all of our schools, our teachers, our staff, our principals, and the like. So when we think about our revenue forecast, and this is where it starts to take shape, you now know kind of what our needs are. And now, when we look at federal dollars, we are expecting our federal entitlement dollars, this is Title I, Title II, Title III, IDEA, actually, to decrease by about $1,800. So it's super marginal. We can probably be all right with that decrease. Obviously, we don't want it to go down, but it will. And then we get into state aid and sales tax. And I think everybody in here knows we're in the second year of the state biennium budget. We don't know what's going to happen this year at the legislature. We anticipate that we will get the money that's supposed to be there as part of the second year of the biennium budget. And if we do, we should get a projected increase in state aid of $664,000 and an increase in sales tax of about $31,000. If that gets tinkered with in some way, and we don't get those dollars, you'll see what that means to us in terms of a problematic budget, an even further problematic budget going forward. But we anticipate, I anticipate that we will get those, those dollars, and I'm optimistically hopeful, if those are two words you can put together. So then we look at the FY '26 forecasted transfer need. And this is the amount that we need from this general government, city council, for us to do what needs to be done. So to address the expenditures that I've shown you, these are the collective bargaining agreements, these are the contractual obligations, the current condition, and growth. To account for growth, we need a transfer of 9.4%, unless the state, and that's if the state doesn't come in. I'm hopeful that the state will come in with the money that we're projecting. And if the state does come in with the projected revenue that we, that we're anticipating, we would need an 8.1% transfer from the city council for us to meet our obligations in the schools. Thinking about it a different way, if we took out those items that would be considered enhancements, also growth positions, but those were the things at the bottom, and I'll talk about those in just a second. So think PYP coordinator, parent resource engagement specialist at Mount Daniel, school board initiative, and athletic materials and supplies. If we took those off and simply did maintenance of effort, only what we're doing today, next year, and we receive the money from the state, we would need a 7.5% transfer. That's just to maintain our current effort and serve the additional growth that we are experiencing in the City of Falls Church. So I want to, before I ask questions, I want to call your attention to the one pager that says "estimates for planning purposes" only on it. And this, this one pager is a really great handy tool for school board members and for city council members to look at, because it's organized in the way that I've presented the information tonight. There's contractual obligations, and I would ask you to, next to that, write collective bargaining agreement. Enrollment growth, and I would ask you next to that green line to write 159 more students. Current obligations, perhaps write something called maintenance of effort. And then enhancements, I might write something like due to growth. All of those, when you sum total those, end up in the dark green line that says FY '26 fiscal forecast expenditure adjustment. For us in the schools, we'll need $4.96 million for us to run our schools with the enhancements and our current obligations. So, so that is not an insignificant amount of money. I get that. But I think it's really important to consider that in the context of the growth that we're experiencing. So think about that enrollment growth, and then the enhancements that we are also looking at doing as a consequence of, of the growth. So my last slide, if we can flip back to that, is the budget calendar. Actually, there's two more. Budget calendar, it's more of an eye test than a slide, so forgive me for that. But you can take a look at that. It does all lead, all roads lead to May, when you all make the final decisions about the budget. Of course, like always, just reminding the city council, we are about three months ahead of you. So we will go through all of our public hearings, all of our budget deliberations, all of our budget work sessions, starting in January. The first meeting that we have in January is the meeting that I will present the superintendent's proposed budget. Tonight really is representative of what that will likely look like, because by, by Virginia code, I'm required to present a needs-based budget. And, and that's what we will be doing based on what we're currently doing and the enrollment growth. And with that, Mayor Hardy and Chair Gould, we want to just thank everybody again for listening to us tonight, talking about what our needs are in the school division. And also, I hope you hear the excitement that we all have about this growth. I think we're really sort of jazzed about it, and think that, you know, adding more kids to our schools just makes for an even more vibrant community, gives us opportunities to do some things that we might not have been able to do with the smaller population, and really think that this is great for the City of Falls Church. So thank you all for, for this evening, and we're here for any questions that you might have, or that, that, well, I almost said Walden Cooper. I'm sorry. That Stephen Fuller Institute can answer. Even, even the school, even the school ones, he'll take those, he said.
Thank you. Wyatt and Kieran?
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Well, Peter, thank you for that. And so we're going to do two things. One, I'm going to do a quick summary of the financial terms for the West Falls project. And then, and I'm going to be quick on that, because what people really want to do is hear from Kieran. And I'm going to be passing out Kieran's slides while I give this summary. So don't look at what we're passing out right now. Kieran will be talking about it in about five minutes.
Can I make a quick interjection, Wyatt?
Yes.
So for the really boring part about West Falls, the reason I asked for this is because I think at the time, only Mary Beth, me and Dave were around for this negotiation. I think all of the school boards knew since then. And so we thought it was really important to give everyone a refresher about the financial terms of the West Falls project, given that's right next to the schools and is paying for the high school, as well as potentially the Phase Two that was negotiated back in the 2018, 2019 era. So we thought this was a timely thing, especially for Peter's last meeting as well. Thank you. Sorry, Wyatt.
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't know, am I able to drive with this clicker, Sophie, or?
Yeah, let's see.
Okay.
Here's seven slides for us.
And so this is just four slides, and let's see if this works. Okay. So this is a very, not doing justice to the Mary Beth Conley zipper. But for those who maybe are not fully aware of it, the West Falls project goes back at least to 2014. And the noteworthy part about that is that we did a boundary adjustment with Fairfax County to allow an idea that in fact, the school board had to begin with. It was a school board idea to potentially fund the construction of a new high school by offering some acreage of the school campus for economic development. And so that idea was related to the city council and to the general government. We did push very hard then in terms of the sale of the water system, that that agreement include a boundary adjustment to bring the school property into the city limits. They would allow us to have control over a project like that. In 20, we did a lot of planning. And in 2017, there was a bond referendum for the high school in the amount of $120 million. And then after that referendum, we got to work. We had actually been working before that referendum of doing all the planning. But the schools issued an RFP for design and construction, and that resulted in Gilbane and that team being selected. And about three months behind the schools, we wanted to be a beat behind the schools so that the school planning could be ahead, we issued an RFP for economic development, and that resulted in the selection of the Hoffman team that you see building the buildings there today. In 2019, the city council approved the land entitlements and the comprehensive agreement that has the terms that I'll describe here in 2021, in January, right on time. In 2021, in January, right on time, the Meridian High School opened. That was a heroic effort and a really well-managed project.
Under budget.
That's right. And also in 2021, there were what we call the COVID amendments to the comprehensive agreement and to the site plan. And that results in the terms that we'll, we'll summarize here. And I just double clicked, so I'm probably going to lose that slide. I might go back. Okay. So this was in the read-ahead materials. The bottom line, the, the capitalized rent for a 99-year ground lease where you see the West Falls being built today, the capitalized payments were 25.5 million, spread over with a last payment of $1 million coming in the budget year that we're about to be talking about and we're planning for now. There was a, a profit share provision that was, we called the land lift, so the increase in value after entitlements. That $817,000 was spread over the final six payments of the, of the base rent. There's a phase two, and I'll show that on the next slide, but that is the sort of bare piece of dirt where the mural is on the backside of the parking garage. And in addition, in the parking lot area of Meridian High School, that also is designated as an office development site. And I'll show that schematically in just a moment. That payment is pre-negotiated at $10 million or appraised value, whichever is higher. And then the final base rent is a supplemental payment of $200,000 a year that starts in the budget year that we're talking about coming up, 2026. And then that grows at 2.75% per year with a small kicker and 2031 of an additional $30,000. That lasts the full 99-year terms of the lease. That has about a $90 million nominal value and a $20 million present value. There's affordable housing payments that start once the senior building is completed in FY '29, and that's about $230,000 per year, escalating at 3% per year. And then there's a profit share for the condo building, which we'll keep an eye on. And then there's an administrative fee of 25 basis points every time a condo sales, sells in the future, after the first sellout by the developer. So that will be collected at the same time as recordation taxes are paid. So kind of the basic terms come to $38 million over this about 14-year period that is shown graphically. And then after what's shown on this chart, just the supplemental rent and the affordable housing payments will continue on. There was a, an economic development agreement associated with this, and this is relevant to our forecast that Kieran will have in just a moment. It was essentially a tax abatement deal. And so that was the essence of it. But it also provided some predictability, or that was the upside to us, of, of knowing what the payments would be. However, that predictability was undercut by the delay of the senior building. So what the agreement called for was $1 million in 2025, stepping up to 1.5, then 2 million, then 3 million. And then in '29, the agreement is finished, we're done, and we're projecting that the property would be assessed at about $350 million, and that would generate $4.2 million in property taxes. So then that's the end of that agreement, and they'll just pay normal taxes. With the senior building, now they closed on that last week, and they will get under construction. And so we think they will then catch up and the, the economic development agreement numbers will then be as predicted in 2027 going forward. So that $825,000 is our current projection for what West Falls will pay, and that will be factored into what Kieran is going to present in the revenue forecast. So that is the, the numbers, the, the key thing, I think, for the school board and the city council to be aware of is for phase two. That is actually coming up soon. The outside closing date for phase two is June of 2026. The developer has three options where they can pay the city $800,000 and get another, and push their closing date out a year. And they can do that three times. Those are non-refundable payments, but they get deducted from the $10 million lump sum payment or appraised value, whichever is higher. So this is something we'll need to start thinking about potentially in the coming months about phase two. The one that is kind of most relevant is the office development, which is entitled, and it is, you know, part of the overall ground lease conceived as phase two. The requirement is that all of the parking would then need to be provided by the developer in a structured parking lot. So they can build an office building on top of that once that parking is provided. That will be a difficult thing to do, and so there, there, we'll, we'll see how that plays out. But that is something that they are entitled to do, and the price is already pre-negotiated. So that is what I wanted to cover, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Seeing that, I guess people, or, go ahead, Kathleen.
I guess I was just curious on your, your understanding of the likelihood of this happening at, at all or on this timeline? Like, have you, have you gotten any indication from them?
Well, the medical office building, we, we believe, we're told, is, is, it's all tenanted out, it is all leased, and they're very enthusiastic about what's happening there. And so they have indicated to us that they are interested in a second building. But that has been verbal, and we don't know much more about it than that sort of expressions of things so far are working out well.
And that second building could be either of the two spaces?
No. The office would go in the space closest to Meridian.
B4.
That's right. And the, and the residential, the other spot where the mural is, is expected to be residential.
Thank you.
Quick question. On the, and this is, I just haven't paid enough attention to the plan for where the mural is. So we know that the, the school parking currently exists where the office building would go, but like what, what is happening in the space? Is it becoming a plaza until the residential building goes up? Is it like fenced off and not accessible to the public? Like the, the area where the residential building could go, what is that going to appear like for the next X number of years?
It's going to look much like it does right now. It's going to be a staging area for the construction of the senior building. So not lovely. Now, because these dates are coming upon us, I think it's probably going to be used as staging for the senior building up to the point where they now then need to make a decision what they're going to do with it. The other thing that really should have been kind of the lead on this whole presentation is that all these dollars are spoken for. They, the annual debt service on the high school alone is $6 million a year. In the referendum, we said the idea is that the 10 acres would pay a portion of the debt service. And we have met that promise. We're, we're covering right now two-thirds of the debt service through this agreement. The net fiscal impact for this project is projected to be between $5 and $6 million per year. And so when the taxes come online, it will, it will continue to cover that debt service. All right. So that, now we'll transition into Kieran's presentation. And before we do that, I did want to just say a couple introductory comments and thank Peter for, this might be, well, this will, he's announced that this will be his last budget planning session together with us as a group. And this partnership that we've had between general government and schools in financial planning has been, I think, something that is a great legacy. It is a body of practices that are written down. It's not a formal agreement, but it's a body of work that is, that is kind of like British common law. There's precedence now on how we can make our lives more predictable and planful and meet needs. There's so much that happens between general government and schools in the area of public safety with our school resource officers, emergency management, wrecking parks with all the sharing of space, elections, IT, we share our backbone financial systems with each other. And then, of course, partnership in economic development and capital planning. And so by making the budgeting process more predictable and maybe less tense, it really has opened up lots of things that we can do together in a very cooperative way. And, and that's been a wonderful thing. I've really enjoyed doing that with you, Peter, and your team. Kieran is going to take it away now, and I always kind of like to steal the thunder a little bit at the beginning. And the bottom line is, as Dr. Waters has said, you know, in response to your question, and he said it last year, the, the capital region is struggling economically. We've been flat for several years in a row. And his projection is, and what, and the Fuller Institute's projections is, is that kind of stagnation economically is likely to continue at least for a couple of years. In that regional context, the city is growing, and we have growth in revenue. Kieran's going to show a projection of about 5.5% to 6% growth in revenue for next year. And that outperforms just about every other locality in the, that we're aware of so far. They're all doing meetings like this right now as well, and our numbers are higher than theirs are. And we have, the challenges that come with, with growth, and we need to meet those challenges. So with that healthy revenue growth, our costs are higher than that which the economy is providing for us, and so we have a budget gap. And so if, if the general government side has a very sort of straightforward budget where we handle compensation in our jurisdictional contracts, and that's about it, we would have about a $2 million gap between general government and schools together. And so that's what we're going to talk about tonight. And I'll turn it over to Kieran for more details. Here you go.
Good evening, Mayor Hardy, members of the council, and Chair Gould, and members of the school board. I am Kieran Vawa, Director of Finance at the city, and happy to bring fiscal year 2026 projections, revenue projections, along with our budget cost drivers here at the general government and a comprehensive calendar for everybody. So just to keep in mind a few factors that we are bearing to prepare as we get ready to prepare this budget fiscal year 2026. The region is experiencing a moderate inflation, 2.6% CPI increase in the Washington metropolitan area, September 24 over last year. The labor market remains competitive at 2.9%. The Commonwealth of Virginia, the unemployment rates are relatively low, and Falls Church even lower at 2.5%. And with the new administration in DC, the change in federal policies could impact potential flow of funds for the local and state governments. With that, I will transition to the revenue forecasts. The real estate taxes are projected to grow at 6.9%. All other taxes, and these are general fund taxes, I will delve into those in the next few slides, are projected to grow at 3.8%. And overall, general fund tax revenues are projected to grow at 5.9%. That equates to 5.9 million in new revenue for fiscal year 2026. And as Mr. Shields mentioned, half of this is accounted by new development. Absent this 2.9 million, we would have been a traditional growth of like 3%, close to 3%. And along the lines of the revenue share that we've done in the many years now, so 5.9 million divided 50/50 split between the schools and general government would make each of our portion to be 2.95 million. And for the schools, this translates to 5.6% increase. Moving along. So looking at the regional assessed value, property values, this chart, as you can see, is evolving. We're still collecting information from neighboring jurisdictions. At an overall level, Falls Church assessed values, the assessors reporting are projected to increase at 7.8%, which is relatively higher than the data we have for Fairfax County and Alexandria. Residential, again, a growth of 5.4% based on 10 months of sales, real estate sales that we've seen through the end of October, is higher than most of the jurisdictions. The Fairfax City, I want to point out, includes the new construction, and thus the larger number. Commercial, including the apartments, we are projecting an increase of 2.4% in our values. And the region here is struggling on that front with negative growth. And then, a 3.4% increase is projected for new construction, which is about $198 million, close to $200 million. And that's like 11% of the overall growth.
Kieran, could I make a quick comment on this?
Sure.
The reason why property values matter a lot is that real estate taxes are 60% of our revenues. And so this is really important to understand, kind of the regional context, because I think we're just, as Wyatt said, we're in a really fortunate state where we're outperforming everybody else. We just don't have that commercial vacancy problem, especially for our neighbors in Arlington and Alexandria, this is a big deal.
So this chart now shows fiscal year 2026 estimates that we have in assessed value in comparison with the five-year average growth for, and that's calculated based on January 1, '24 and five years prior. Most of the categories, we are ahead of the averages. And the last one is the median homeowner tax increase. So with, with the information that we have here, the projections, an increase of 529 in an average bill. And median home price is $1,001,100. This chart shows a breakdown of the residential, commercial, and multifamily assessed value trends over the last 10 years. In 2025, total assessed valuation has crossed the $6 billion mark. That's the further right column that you see. And the light blue is the residential portion, the dark blue is the multifamily, and the green is the other general commercial.
Kieran, am I reading this right, that from, I guess, 10 years, we've added $2 billion to the tax base?
Correct.
And if I'm looking at the charts, a billion of that is for multifamily and commercial? Which is pretty much, and some, but I guess it's just due to organic increases, but.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sure. So this is a rather busy table, but at a higher level, total general fund tax revenues are projected to grow at 5.9%, strong compared to the region. And overall, the other taxes, the second to the last line, is projected to grow at 6.2%. Built in there is the hotel tax and the recreation tax. Pending sale of various properties at West Falls, we are projecting those to increase in fiscal year 2026. Meals and business license, we are projecting no growth in those categories. And then moving along, and we'll take a look, a closer look at four of these charts. The blue line is the budget, and the red line is the actuals. We've done it for all those four categories, and I'll go straight to the meals, which is of interest, given that we're not projecting here. So. So, so for the first three months of the fiscal year, the meals taxes are lagging. We saw that in the first quarter report a couple of weeks ago. And signifying growth levels that are coming closer at pre-COVID rates. And then, the fiscal year 2025, the dotted line that we're projecting, it would end at 5.3% increase over 24 actuals. And that's based on the quarter one report, and then, and including revenues from new developments. So if you see the budget line for 2025, that blue dot is higher than where we're projecting it to end. For that, we're projecting no growth in that, and that accounts for, that increase accounts for revenue from the new developments. Absent new developments, this could have been a drop in the revenue projections. Business license. So in fiscal year '24 and '25, 24 actuals dropped over 23, if you see that. I don't have a flicker that I can point, but the fiscal year '24 actuals are lower than the '23 actuals, so making our projection for '25 a bit higher. And fiscal year '25 projection is that 5.6% increase, which is closer to the three-year average, the 5.6%. And for that reason, we are projecting no growth in the business license budget number.
Karen, I know there's a significant amount of attention in the newspaper about new businesses coming online. I'm just curious why there's no projection in revenue for the amount of attention that we've been reading about all the new businesses. Can you explain that?
So, sure. So, there is a regular increase that we see in the meals, and those averages are like 7%, like a seven-year, 10-year average. And then, we built in projection for new developments. And in this first quarter, the new business, like the Whole Foods, projected to open in February, that didn't factor in in our first quarter results. And in first quarter, we saw some flattening of the increase in the meal stacks revenue, the collections. So that projection is what we adjusted downwards and then added the new development revenue from the new development, and then it comes closer to where we are at right now.
Maybe one, you know, this, we have these charts, just because revenue forecasts, they matter so much. We know a lot, everyone's interested in them, so we want to be as transparent as possible. And if there are any questions, we can dig into more data. We budgeted aggressively in the current year. That's that real steep blue line that's going up. We're now revising that downward a little bit based on our actuals so far. So our budget, if it's flat, as it's shown here, that blue line flaps out between '25 and '26, that still assumes healthy growth from actual to hit that higher blue dot, even though from a budgeting perspective, it'll look flat. So we're walking everybody through that just to try to be clear, you know, transparent about it. What I think the data is telling us is that our existing restaurant base, they are seeing some reduction, and, or at any rate, we're seeing a reduction in tax receipts from our existing restaurant base. That's being offset by growth in the sector that's associated with new restaurants opening up, and the Whole Foods is going to pay a lot of meals taxes with the prepared foods. But that's, in some respects, going against a headwind that I think many of our restaurants might be experiencing right now.
So, so from this, just to make sure, out of all the years, we've undercounted what we thought we were going to be collecting, except for one year? And, but now, this year, you're significant, you're confident that we're going to significantly underdo, undercount what we projected?
Well, if you draw from the orange line up to that new dot, we still need to grow pretty healthily to hit that blue dot in 2026. Are you tracking me on that?
Yeah, I'm just saying, I mean, okay, so the orange dot is always over the blue dot for almost every year except for one. And now we're thinking that somehow we're going to be undercounting what we're projecting on collecting for this year, even though we've always undercounted, except for one year. That's what I'm looking at. I'm just trying to make sure, how confident are we that we are going to not collect as much as we thought, when we've always collected more than we thought for every year except for one year since 2016? That's what I'm asking.
What I might say is, we certainly undercounted in the bounce back from COVID. No question about that, and you can see that in the data. But if you go back pre-COVID, we generally were getting our meals tax numbers, we were nailing it pretty well. So with the '25 budget, we said, dag on it, we're tired of being behind on this, and we got real aggressive on it. And now we're a little concerned the data coming in might suggest we were a little bit too aggressive in '25. But this comes in month to month, and we'll share the data as we get it.
Okay, great, thanks, White.
So that sums up the revenue projections. Looking at the cost drivers for the general government, overall, we are projecting a need of 2.94 million, and that does not account for any new positions or new initiatives or expanded service. That 2.94 is broken down into 1.8 million in compensation, a 1% compensation is $285,000. And along with a 10% increase in health premium, and some year-round adjustments, and making one of the position that was funded for half a year in the current year's budget would require 1.8 million ARPA positions, three positions, 50% funded, $150,000. And then, an increase in WAMADA and other inter-jurisdictional contracts, and also some internal contracts for utilities and fuel, et cetera. A $1 million placeholder for that would require us costs to go up by 2.94 million. And as Mr. Shields said in the beginning, that along with the 4.96 million, the protection from the schools, at the current 5.9% increase in total revenue, general fund revenues, would, we're seeing a shortfall at this time of 2 million. And that brings us to that huge calendar of budget dates. I'll just call out a couple of, two or three important ones. After the council's guidance discussion today, and then formal guidance adoption next Monday on the 9th, the school superintendent's budget proposal is expected on the second Tuesday in January, on January 14th. And then, the city manager and the school superintendent present, collectively present their budget proposals on March 24th. And adoption of the city council's budget is on May 12, followed by the school board's adoption on May 13th, for a budget that goes into effect on July 1st. And I'll stop there for any questions or clarifications.
Thank you, Karen. Laura?
Thank you so much, Karen, or Ms. Bawa. Actually, this is a question for Dr. Noonan. Based on what Mr. Shields and Ms. Bawa were talking about with the surrounding communities, specifically what Mayor Hardy also pointed to with the, we're lucky that we don't have this, all this office space that's unoccupied. But, Dr. Noonan, I was just curious, I wrote down that you had said that surrounding school systems with their collective bargaining agreements were looking at 7% to, all the way to 9% salary increases. How do you think they will be able to meet that considering they're in worse financial shape than we are?
I don't know. I think because there are collective bargaining agreements in place, that some jurisdictions will be looking at raising revenue through tax increases.
So that would be, your guess would be that they would have to?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Just from Ms. Bawa, on your slide 13, cost drivers. Dr. Noonan presented a really detailed description, and I know the schools are a bit ahead of where we are, but with your compensation and benefits of $1.8 million increase, is that a similar percentage increase to what the schools are planning to give?
Correct. This is to mirror the 5% increase.
That mirrors that, okay. And that doesn't, as you said, no new positions, initiatives, or expanded services. So, we can assume if we want to do anything new, which we all seem to like to do, that would be more than 2940 for the general government.
Okay. Karen?
Yeah, so I had a similar question to Ms. Connolly. On the, so on the school side, we seem to have a number in front of us that's more realistic in terms of the schools conveying what they think their needs are, and whether we'll be able to kind of meet those needs financially, is sort of the question we're all kind of looking at and grappling with. And on the general government side, I guess the number that we're seeing then is simply the maintenance number. Because I thought in last year's, you know, general government presentation, for example, we were talking about, you know, we needed X number of police officers or patrol officers, given the amount of growth we were seeing, for example, and because the police department couldn't onboard X number of officers as easily, right, in one year, that it would make sense, for example, to bring the police force that we thought we would need and onboard them, like in fiscal year '26, for example. But you're saying that what you, what you're showing now is just the maintenance number, but when you are presenting your general government budget, for example, is this going to come in higher, or are you anticipating presenting a maintenance budget, despite what we heard kind of the actual needs were, particularly on some, like, public safety positions?
So, this, you know, this maintenance budget, I think, it is a, you know, 5.6% increase over our current budget, so I have a hard time thinking of that as a maintenance budget. That's a pretty good budget. We have not done the deep dive in terms of really understanding what our inter-jurisdictional contracts are going to be yet. We won't know that probably until February. And so, there's just a lot of variables, so I haven't developed it yet. I'm presenting it this way, you know, partly because we have had several years in a row of pretty significant increases in our budget, and we are still kind of onboarding additional staff and making the transitions that we need to do the ramping up. And there is, there is a lag to that. We had a vacancy report that we discussed with GovOps just last week. We currently have over 10% of our budgeted positions are vacant right now, which is partly because there's been new positions, there were nine new positions in last year's budget, and we're onboarding those. That's a big component of that vacancy number. That's all to say, I don't feel it's irresponsible at this point to present a number at that maintenance level. There will be new facts that we will need to discuss with the council about how we meet our public safety needs, because I do know that those exist, our paving needs. We know that we want to up our paving budget. A lot of things like that are going to be part of the discussion next spring.
Just want to throw in the Government Energy Action Plan, Community Energy Action Plan, to that list of council priorities that aren't reflected in this particular general government cost drivers for future discussion. But just to be transparent about some of the expectations on funding on the general government side, too.
Go ahead, Laura.
And I'm sorry, I probably missed this, but in terms of the WAMADA, I remember reading in the material that the state had provided us, or provided some locality some support. So is this number, is this a guesstimate, or do we, is this without state aid, or?
So, WAMADA itself, a 3%, that's typically like what we plan around, is a 200,000 number.
Okay.
However, the WAMADA has a gap of 195 million.
Okay.
The 95 million of that was accounted by help from the federal level, which is absent right now, and they're trying to see if they can rejigger the calculations in the jurisdictions. And with that, it could be somewhere between 3% to 5%, but we don't know. They are presenting their budget in mid-December or a little bit later.
Okay.
So that's another unknown at this time.
Thank you.
And if I could just add to, same thing Superintendent said, we don't know what the state budget is yet. The second year of the biennium has the hold harmless state money, so as long as that stays, the 3% to 5% range holds. And we're anticipating it to hold, but it's an unknown also, a variable.
Thank you. Other, there's a lot of information to digest. Questions, thoughts? I think the real challenge is, I think Laura hit it on the head, which is, you know, the region, I think, is going to have a hard time figuring out how to pay for the growth and pay for the budgets that are being requested, and I think we're just going to have to stay tuned to what is realistic to do. I think the good news story again in Falls Church is we are outperforming that of everybody else, so the fact that we have 5.9% revenue growth, and if, absent the new construction, I think in the staff report, it said we'd be looking more like a 2.9%, which is actually much more average with what we historically have seen. So it is a good news story that we have 5.9% to work with. I think there's the big unknown that Dr. Waters talked about is what happens across the river. So, I know that's really top of mind for me. Okay? Other thoughts? Kate? Well, I guess we will break, because I know that we all each have separate meetings that we need to handle as well, unless we want to continue the discussion here. Okay? Thank you for this great kickoff, and lots of information to digest. I guess we'll be following up with more budget questions and details to come. Thank you all.